I think they got it.
Yeah.
So what, so it's all the same with the table?
Yeah.
It's a lot of things.
They get more than that.
Let's look at the issues.
I know that.
It's a good idea.
That was you.
So that could be a really big one. So I think there's, there's, there's a lot of time to go.
I think we're.
I think we're going to have to do that.
Yeah.
What do you do? So they're all good again, again, because they have the other hands that got this. Beautiful. You're very, very old now.
Ah, yeah, yeah, I think you put the bucket on, just to be in the pocket.
I'm over this here. So the chief. He didn't see, not a bit, and I said, I have a report, I don't know. I said, what can you see there? I said, other days, like, I didn't, okay, I had a problem.
So I guess Gary would.
That's a piece of.
And Gary has kind of a skirt in there.
Yeah, Jen's.
I don't know what it was.
That's good.
I don't know, he said, I wasn't sure who was gonna give her.
I don't think it was anybody.
I should be back.
What did they do?
Not animal.
I'll try my best, unless your big shoes are gone. Just don't ask me to do any math, we're okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the name is, you got a DMS card, man, it was a class four.
The cop was the guy.
Uh, cop, there's something else going on.
No idea.
Yeah, we were out in crash, I'm driving a little, he said, I gotta go. Go ahead, someone's taking care of it. No place in science. Wrong.
Well, they did, I, so I want to check one man. Call somebody to fix the one. Just don't forget that. It's okay with you.
I'll call them. Thanks, Jerry. Hey, you guys ready? Okay, let's call the meeting to order with pledge to the flag. Flag of the United States.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation, no one's on the sheet, does anybody? Did you miss anybody? Okay. Approval of the minutes from July 11th. I looked over, I didn't see any issues.
That was good.
I make a motion for approval.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Code enforcement.
No Jeff.
No Jeff. They said Tony's not there anymore either. So. I didn't know. It looks like the only thing we have is.
Weeds.
Weeds, what they have, there's, I forgot.
Well, there's one in Hamburg, too.
That goes well.
Yes, I creeped down there and said that he's almost dried up. So you know it. Okay, can I do nothing about it? I'm all too aware of that.
Almost finally.
It's dried up. This is not, this is not dried up. They take that corner out. We're doing our best.
Okay.
This, we're working with the DEP.
Well, that's a waste of time.
They have a different calendar.
That'd be the approval in the middle of the spring when it's filled up.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Big rains coming. This, I think, I got there. Shouldn't be a problem.
What was that?
It happens.
Oh.
Yeah, they did. Actually, they, they should did that, it'll be after they had. But some bit of a misunderstanding.
Ron, you advise it pretty hairy yet?
Yeah, they push hauled it with their flail mower for.
Backwood.
It shredded it, but it's higher and taller than it was before. But they didn't.
Might need time to do it again.
Yeah.
You gotta spray it.
So what's, do we have any timeline on when they're gonna do something? We had a rush, construction meeting, and they wanted to get it approved, and.
Yeah, um, I think they're waiting on the contract, they have a little contract, so. That's all I know. Kind of keep going.
Yeah, we'll reach out again to.
I'll, I'll probably say.
Is that the solar park company? Yeah, we're finalizing agreements, so that's why the construction is not. It's actually begun.
Okay. So you hold it.
It's, well, no, not exactly. They don't have a cost estimate to us either, so.
I just can't believe they let that whole field go to pot and infest, at least crops or something, and they're only using the back for the solar part, aren't they?
No, so.
The whole thing.
So if you have contact with the management, that's a lot of work.
It would seem to be moved. They happen to know if it's the head's responsibility to think whatever the deal is, but somebody needs to involve.
Also, they must be their friend, wouldn't they, no?
Yeah. Again. It's crashing, I hear we're going on delivery. I thought through Virgins delivery, yeah, I didn't take notice.
Well, you have to look at the house, it's a size that's important.
Yeah, I gotta see that.
See someone goes there.
Any other questions?
There's not a lot of issues. I did some. Just have to come back.
Two of those one about. One heats up or something.
They put on some of that, they have their side of G and I's, right, the township line up, it's on, it's on the panel.
So.
So we set up, it looks like, but they have a good.
Is Jeff out?
That I don't know, I don't, he's not my office worker, he's out.
I don't think he's out yet.
I know Frank is out, Frank is doing a lot of labor now.
So that's someone?
Yes.
I see you have a report.
Just a question, is there any update on the property in line road here? I missed, I like, it was the last meeting.
What now?
It's not the same vehicles.
Oh.
They're not here. No, they're still.
Still working on it.
They visit that, so. The Mexican state.
Lot of permit. Lot. I don't see anything on the issue, your court, that's.
That came late. Or shattering.
No.
Subject that repairs.
I wonder if they have a list of who pumped it, who didn't.
Yes. I don't know what I'll hand them.
How are we with that, how complain?
Um, I think there's only one person yet, and they're going to report with me, find out this one off. There's only one person like that, and then.
That's not bad.
District three will be next.
And that's in spring?
Yes.
Police report, I don't see the chief here.
Mark, where he shows up. Urgent level report.
Nobody here for working off.
I thought Mark was gonna be here, but.
Yeah, I did see they have an open house. On Saturday, maybe the 27th, something with, I see the helicopter's gonna be there. That's gonna be pretty cool. I just wanted to make that announcement, if anyone wants to go. Check it out. Yeah, I don't see it. Yeah, Saturday, August 27th, 10 to 3, open house, K9 demonstration, met a, met a vac helicopter landing after 1:00. Searching, I see tracking demonstration at 1:30. In case anybody wants to. Anything for Walnut Town, they have that, Jeff?
No, getting dizzy again, I thought. Thankfully not in our area.
Smart guy's website. You guys look at it.
I, I reviewed it. Um, trying to be chop it around.
Yeah.
The setup fee was a little high, I thought. In the other day's world.
Do you have any other recommendations?
Yeah, we had.
There's one that, that uses, it's called WIPs, that is, pretty much they give you, um, I think you put your picture on an actual page, load all your stuff up, and it's like a. I don't remember if it's a 17 or 23 dollars, I mean, she paid, I think they pay at 270 every three years. To be the hosting.
Just a safety one. Yeah, reach out to them, see if they can.
And the key of that whole thing is being able to update it.
Yes.
Easily.
And it's gonna be their user friendly, that they can get permits, check the agenda, check the, uh, you know, meeting minutes, everything.
Interactive?
Yes.
That'll be good, have a link to the street. Pretty subject.
Right.
I'm sure this will be good. It's a good point.
I agree. Are you up to speed on the invoices? For Rustland?
I know what the underlying issue was, but I've run.
So we're just gonna forego that till next week.
Okay.
So Chris can, Chris is well aware of the issues, really. Not issues, but. Discussion. I did see that Cleveland doesn't have a problem with us.
Correct.
So that's good, that's. That's good.
That should be real, they only hurt.
Yeah.
They just have to get the plans together and submit permits and make sure that those are acceptable.
Right, at their cost.
Right.
Um, all business progress on Hewitt Avenue, not sure we have anything on that. I'm not gonna throw you in the.
No, I did check with Chris, since he's got a bunch of old file folders and he's reviewing. I don't have enough to review this month.
Partial letter vestro release for GT, Scott's not here, but I read the.
I talked to Scott about that today.
Oh, did you?
He's working his way through that, and he is very close to. Releasing a part, a partial work. Uh, they have a few functional items to take care of, they need, they need, it's ready to go, a good portion.
So he has here, he's recommending releasing 179,000, I think we're good with that.
Yep.
And then he still has 36,800 escrow yet for the cleanup. So I make a motion, have him release the 179,000, $95.17.
I think he is. I've heard a lot of questions. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Little bit sewer.
I did not get a report circulated to you, I sent it to Chris, I don't know whether he can get a chance to look at it. No major updates this month, because of the available building cycle.
Yeah, we can hold off.
Uh, the, uh, well, I do have a couple of things to report. Wells Fargo, Sioux State Walnut Town, they have a balance of 1,517 dollars. We can't file a complaint against them, but if you would like, we can leave the property. If that's something you would like to do.
Why can't you file?
Just the corporate, the corporate, when we could file the complaint, be getting it through corporate hands and getting it served, sometimes it can be not worth the expense.
We might as well file. I don't know why they would not create that.
Actually, Pam says they've not communicated with them, so why don't we send them a letter first?
Yeah, with the other, they wouldn't create that.
The letter went out to the Richards regarding. They paid a full except for some fees, so we sent that letter out to them, waiting for a response. And the. Chief for Sheriff, Sheriff Stone, uh, the sheriff had showed up. To, for, we commenced a personal property sale, they contacted Pam's. About a payment plan, Pam said call the township, and according to, neither one of us had any communication from them. There is a real property sale coming, a foreclosure sale coming against them as well, so we will ensure that our lanes are updated. So it may be beneficial to the township, we won't have to use the personal property sale, we get the loans filed and updated, we get the money from the real property sale.
Oh, that's.
September 9th. Which would be quicker than we think, which likely quicker than any personal property sale, and then.
Might not happen, did they give you a, uh, did they give you advice, they used a share trial?
We were, are contacted Sheriff's Office on vacation, we reached out to them. To see if they've actually obtained service, because all we've received was a communication from Pam's. And we don't know if they did give a letter or not, so that's another thing we can look at, just.
If that's my update, at least if they're doing that, that'd be a much easier way.
And we wouldn't have the expense of the sheriff's down and storage or whatever items we may take. So there's a major updates.
All right, I think this is probably the time, um. Mr. Avad?
Yes.
Yeah, he's here for the, um. His property of Walnut Town, but.
Yeah, so that access.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any update for the township, the township wants to know what your intentions are? And what, why do you object to?
So, we, we had a little financial problem, and I was supposed to come to the last meeting. Uh, but my father is really sick, and then I completely forgot about it, so we like to keep our land development plan still open. And we're gonna proceed with it.
Do you have a timeline as to what, when you will be proceeding?
Um. I don't have a timeline.
Because the township's really looking for art, do you really plan to complete this project, I mean, how low is it?
Yeah, uh, so, at, at this point, what do we need to do, uh, to, to get this going? I mean, can we just, um, do we have to send you a letter, or do we just hire the paving company to come and, and pay the lot and do the rest of the work, or?
Yeah, the town, yeah, the township's either gonna reject the plan to release the escrow, or we're gonna have to get the work done.
Yeah, so.
And then let's hold on to the escrow.
So what I like to do is, I'm gonna get the work done, and then, uh, bring you proof to you guys that, you know, the work is, you know, being done.
Well, I believe it, the inspectors will come out and inspect to see that the work is done.
Right, right, yeah. That's fine.
Is the township satisfied with that, or do you wanna try to specific with my friend?
Um, I guess, as long as you're gonna. As long as you're gonna get it done.
Yeah.
But, but the problem is, uh, we don't wanna send, we don't wanna send notice of violations that have come over, that they have to move the rest and everything, keep it up to date and get a plan done, and if you can just come back with a letter and say, hey, this is my timeline. You know, we don't care, as long as this, you're gonna move forward, but if it's just gonna hang here, we don't wanna let the plan up there.
Okay, no problem, I'll do that.
So, just get a timeline and keep the property maintained, and then apply, that's, what do you guys say?
And make certain that you apply for any permits that are needed when you do, do whatever you're doing. I mean, it's just an open lot.
Well, it's an open lot, but he has plans, he had, this is a, this is a plan from a while ago where he has, you know, it's an approved plant, he just hasn't completed. So he's had everything ready to go, just didn't finish it.
Just didn't do it.
So.
I pulled completed.
Okay, just give us, and if you just send us a letter giving us a timeline.
Okay.
All right.
I could just, if there's paving that has to be done, make sure, maybe the paving is done before the plans close.
Right.
For fall winter.
And, and also, I was wondering if you guys are okay with it, uh, so there, the township is calling for, um. Two and a half inch of base and an inch and a half of finish, would it be okay with you guys if we did the base first, and, and later? Do the, you know, the, the finish coat.
The wearing surface? Yeah, that's, that's an accepted procedure, I mean, many people do that, they put the binder down first.
Right.
And let that go a year or two, and then they put the wearing surface.
Right, yeah.
I don't think that should be a problem.
And that would keep the weeds down.
Exactly.
You know, and that's, we're just worried about the aesthetic.
Okay. Yeah, if you guys are good, that'd be great, though, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Nothing from Stackback, did we do anything with the generator, and he didn't get any prices on the generator and that?
Radio silence.
No. It was installed though last month. Yeah.
They had to switch, they had to fix. Up with it. All right. Uh, do you have monthly bills? I mean, the monthly road, road master for four.
Yep. All right, let's see, I took a pile of trees that went over there and saw it. There's still more to get.
And from what I'm understanding from our minutes from last month, we are still wanting to be on target for next month, first truck, that one.
Correct.
Okay.
When it's, when it's more snow. Cloud.
Right.
Active. Is it next month, or do you wanna wait till October?
I would say September.
September.
September to close before the October leaves.
Okay, so we'll figure out a price next month, and then put it on for October's, okay.
All right. You don't have any time to go?
General fund, we have check numbers 10528, 20571, including EFTs for 110,269 dollars and 17 cents.
I make a motion to repatch, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, there were no checks, life fund, check number 2150 for 663 dollars and 68 cents.
I make a motion to repatch, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Super fund, check numbers 2980, 2992, including EFTs for 53,066 dollars and 2 cents.
I make a motion to repatch, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Escrow, check numbers 2151 and 2152, for a total of 72,175 dollars and 24 cents.
Make a motion to repatch, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Virginville Fire Escrow, check number 2151 for 779 dollars and 50 cents.
I make a motion to repatch.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to make a note, on 6th of, I'm sorry, the 15th of July, the, um. Stimulus checks we're supposed to be getting from, for the ARPA funds. The second trench did not get released yet, but all of the municipalities that either did not apply for them, or they didn't get into the cutoff, they split that between all the municipalities that actually applied for them. So we got an extra 597 dollars and 84 cents deposited into our account.
So, I wasn't following, did we get the second half?
No, not yet, we will be getting that before the end of this month.
Oh, we got the 500 dollars?
Yes, that was just an extra added for the municipalities that either didn't have time, or.
Okay.
They missed the cutoff, didn't apply for it, but they split that out between all of these, uh, everybody who did apply for it.
What are they gonna expect to give the other payment for the?
By the end of this month.
By the end of this?
Yes.
All right, the tax collector sitting dates, she's gonna be here August 18th, 6th to 3rd, she's gonna be here these nights from 6 to 7. Thursday, August 17th, Monday, August 22nd, Wednesday, August 24th, Friday, August 26th, Tuesday, August 30th, and Wednesday, August 31st. Did we approve these before?
Yes.
You guys have anything else?
I was just reviewing. Which, what you forgot about.
Yeah, I could take those first three, because I'm gonna be away that 30th, 31st, so.
Okay.
I'll take the first three. Open and close.
Yeah, I should be here for all of them, so I can.
Yeah, if you can take the other three, I.
I can do the first three.
And just reminder, the 24th, I. Will be out that day.
Should we go?
So, open and close, yes.
Okay.
Are you gonna be around?
Yeah.
Open and close, yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, police report, I didn't see.
Yeah. Say what's that?
Yeah. Not seeing it.
Your sheets.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, that's surprising, what a month of town.
Yeah, the new sheets are bringing back.
Bringing back. All right. Anything from the public?
I just asked you guys one question.
Go ahead.
The internet service out our way.
The what?
Our internet service out there has diminished a lot. Wondering if we can work with Service Electra to try to get that end of the township service?
You know.
They ran new wire and new stuff with leaders, and they have high, high internet speed now, high, but none of us were able to get them to come in our roads or to hook us up, so. Coming out of town from school road, those couple houses have Fleetwood, have cable, and there's a little bit down in lines, but that stretch.
From where to where?
Well, Fleetwood Lions Road from the last house coming out of Fleetwood, from the school road, just up.
Yep, yep, yep.
From there, all the way to the deck of batteries, there's no internet, as far as. Back through Biddler's, up over the hill, with me, back through, to, uh, almost over to the, your place, but, you know, where your mom died, and.
Yeah.
Beelts, Beelts did a little bit now from, what's Cuztown Road, I guess it's called, in, but everybody in between.
So, so actually, we had discussed this, because I knew you had an issue last year when we, when they were renewing the contract, and I don't know, we, I think we reached out to Service Electra, but I don't know what the outcome is, Chris might, because as we're negotiating for the, you know, this is a part of the problem, we have one part of the township that doesn't get. You know, this is part of the problem, we have one part of the township that doesn't get internet service. And I, I know we had a discussion with them, but I don't know where it ended.
And I reached out to them myself, but we never get a call back, but, you know, the high-speed internet lines have been run now, back ball lead, all the way out to Weaver's. 'Cause he got a new system for it, so Weaver's has it, Decca has it, why in the world is it such a problem for the rest of us to be able to hook up? And I know there's people who are willing, I realize there's a lot of midnight farms who may not be willing, but even those guys are getting burned. You know, with running some of those businesses to get.
So Weaver's, there's a hard line to Weaver's?
Yes.
So why wouldn't they come to have you?
Is there a cable path from Weaver's to you? There's no poles in places.
There will be.
There's not direct, because our phone line comes in between Merz property and our property. But there would be willing to hook up to it, there's three houses there, and then it's a line from there that you follow the telephone line over to us. So there are poles in place that they can follow, um, but we just can't get anywhere, nobody would be calling back.
If they could do aerial.
Yeah.
You don't have, no, they don't have cable service, they can't get cable, that's the problem.
That's the problem, and the phone lines are so deteriorated, we used to, we used to get it through our phone line, forget that, I mean, how many people have phones in, or so, nobody's fixing the line.
And, nor should they.
And for me, I'm the last one on the line, 'cause it starts, it drives a little road through the lines road, and goes all the way up around, it's miles and miles of line that's.
How big it broke.
So, yeah, so we did have, when we renewed with the contract, that was part of it, we did reach out, and I know Chris.
Well, I usually do the nuke one, I get it, so I'll, I'll circle back and look at my notes.
Circle back and look at yours, 'cause we did discuss, and I say, we're renewing this, I know that part of the township cannot get internet, and how in this day and age do you function without internet when you have business?
So even kids going to school, I mean, how, how are we doing?
Even kids going to school. So we did discuss it when we renewed, so I, if you could just look back at that and see what the notes are, and I mean, we have to reach out second.
And I'm, I have their attorney, I have their contact information, so if need to, I can reach out to their attorney and.
Please, see what we have to do.
I'll look at the agreement again. And the reason I asked about the cable is, the agreement only covers cable, but I understand internet goes within, you know, what's the situation, so.
I'm sure a lot of us that would hook up for internet. Would get cable also.
Or they get cables just to get the internet, right? Whatever they had to do.
I would think, I mean, it's just impossible to, for anybody to function anymore, and you think we live in the village.
And it's not uncalled for where you're at.
Well, and now that it's at Weaver's, now it's, it's like.
And Decca.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause I know you guys usually negotiate this time of year, and with that.
I think it was last year we negotiated, so.
They just renewed, what is, um. General streets of the.
Merz Road.
Merz Road.
Merz Road. Merz Road, uh, and then Fleetwood.
Fleetwood Lines Road.
Fleetwood Lines Road between Merz Road and School Road.
Yeah, and then all the back roads, I don't know how, where it all comes in from Cusson Road, but I'd say a lot of those people back there don't have it.
Right now, there is funding available for that, too.
Yeah.
So I think there should be, there's a big push by this administration to give everybody in the galaxy internet. So I know that, I mean, it's just a matter of finding the right ears and services.
And I think you guys would get further than I.
We, we should.
I didn't get nowhere.
We should.
Yeah.
Because it, that's important, I mean, the, the revenue's okay, though we get from, but more important is service than township, right?
Exactly.
So we need to, if you could, I'd like to hear them, you know, the issue. See if we can get something.
Um, the only, and we'll look into this, I don't know if Berks County's doing it or not, but there were surveys along the round about, um, internet access, trying to coordinate. Some of the A R P A money going towards that.
Yeah, I know, they're, they're throwing big money at this.
So maybe you can talk to the attorney at Service Electra and see where we have to head, if they hook us up with the county agency or state agency. And then that's where we'll, maybe just email or so, so.
I would have to do that.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second. Call in favor? Aye.
Chris doesn't believe in. Oh.
I didn't eat.
Somebody.
That's right.
What, there is? Oh, okay. I mean, it's, that is a good company.